So Jamie, this is it. We have arrived. The original schoolhouse.
I can't think of a better place than Nassau County's very first schoolhouse number one. You know, this was built in 1886. I mean, think about that.
Old building.
Yeah. No automobiles, you know, no airplanes. It was horses, horse and buggies.
No air conditioning.
No air conditioning. You're right. But built in 1886, and this was the schoolhouse for Nassau County. Schoolhouse number one. And the last graduating class was 1924. But here's something you may not know. Your great grandmother and your great great uncles went to school here.
Which great uncles?
That would be Tommy and Robert Franks.
Okay. And Robert Franks is the one-
Robert was your great great grandfather.
But moved over to Tiger Island.
He actually built a little living shack or whatever you want to call it on Tiger, and he actually moved over there.
Probably from the education he got here at the schoolhouse.
Well, I'm not saying that. I'm not going to that direction. But your great grandmother went to school here. That was Clara Franks.
Okay.
And she married Mike Tiliakas, who was the boat builder that came here from Greece. This is just, like I said, when you walk through those doors, this just reeks of history.
It is. Love this old building.
It is. Oh, it's great. Let's take a look at the rest of it. Come on.
Boy, they've done a lot of work in here, haven't they?
They have. It's really, it's really beautiful. I mean, this place just, I can't believe what, you know.
But they, every, but all the history is still intact from the floors and what they've done with this room, and I love, love the old staircase there.
Oh, yeah. They maintained every bit of the history that they possibly could, and that's really what, you know, the character of this place, you know. So tell me, you're up for reelection for the Nassau County School Board.
Yes.
I'm a little bit confused. Now, you, you're, you're currently serving in District One, but-
District Three.
Three, but you're running in District One.
Correct. Correct.
What's going on with that?
Well, I didn't move, obviously. Um, I'm currently serving in District Three, but every 10 years, uh, they do a redistricting or redistrict maps, and this time was some pretty major changes. So I live just off the island. They're now splitting the island between District One and District Two, and District One is actually coming just off the island into the O'Neal area.
Oh.
So I will finish this term as serving in District Three, and I guess in December it will change over to District One where I live.
You know, I think about the island. I think about the population now, you know, the growth that we've had. And I think, you know, I think back, you know, like, schoolhouse number one where we are, and the last graduating class was, you know, 1924. And there's a photograph of the last graduating class. And I think of, you know, the growth that we've experienced, I think of the, how many students do we have now?
Oh gracious. We're something along the order of 13,000 now district-wide.
13,000 students.
And growing every day.
And how many schools countywide do we have now?
16 schools now. Uh, that includes Wildlight Elementary that was opened up, the most recent, but 16 total for our county.
My gosh. And, you know, the growth is going to continue. I don't see it slowing down, you know, uh, in my opinion, I don't see it slowing down. And there's going to be, well, there's going to have to be more schools built. I mean, that's, that's it. Which comes with more staff, more teachers. And speaking of staff and teachers, someone was telling me the other day that there seems to be a lot of teachers who are exiting, who are leaving, who are resigning. Um, can you address that?
We're just jumping right into that, huh?
Yeah, we're jumping right into that, yeah. I hate to hit you cold with something like that.
No, well, I should have known when you didn't share any of the questions up front. We do. Our district is no different than any other school district, um, in the state of Florida and nationwide. We, there's a teacher shortage. There's a teacher shortage everywhere. Does it concern me? It does concern me. Um, I look at exit interviews, which are optional, but we're, we ask our, our teachers to, you know, put down, what is the reason? Why are you leaving? What's your thoughts? And you yourself, you remember a couple of weeks ago, we had a nice teacher come in that I had never met before that stopped by our, our office, and she's exploring being a nurse. And we got a chance to talk with her and share our experiences in the home care business. And then I say, gosh, you've been a teacher for 10 years, and now you're, you're thinking about moving on. But she wanted to make a change. So it's a systemic problem. It's in the restaurant industry. It's in, um, you know, hotel hospitality. It's everywhere. So we're addressing that. We're addressing that, um, in, in different ways, I guess. We're still doing recruitment fairs, but now we're doing recruitment fairs that are not only in person, but we're also doing recruitment fairs that are virtual and digital.
Oh.
Uh, we're also encouraging and we're seeing a shift where principals and other teachers will introduce Nassau County to their friends, and we're seeing some that are coming over from close districts to us.
Other districts.
Other districts, that's correct. Um, it's a problem I think we're going to battle, you know, for years to come, but we're staying on top of it. Our district's in a lot better shape than most. When we started our recruitment for the '22, '23 school year, we had 150 vacancies. Sounds like a lot, but we have 850 teachers. So you start doing the math, and it's about 15% plus or minus. Today's numbers were something under 70, 75 or so is what we have for vacancies. And it's a fluid number. You know, teachers are always moving and changing. Some are moving schools. Some have talked about resignations, but they haven't actually tendered a resignation. Some are looking for change. Some are going to the district level. So until the end of the school year, until we get into the summer, it's tough to see what that number will actually be.
What is the total budget for the Nassau County school system?
Total budget for us, all things included, $224 million. And if you say it really fast, it doesn't even sound like a big number, but it is $224 million, yes.
And so, and I'm just asking because I had someone ask me Friday, well, are teachers leaving because of the pay, but what percentage of your total budget would you say is going to salaries?
Uh, total budget being 224 million, so we're just north of 80%. Let's say 81, 82%.
Going to budget?
Uh, for salaries, our budget, for salaries.
For budget, going to salaries. And that includes bus drivers? That includes-
Yes.
That includes, um, custodian workers.
Bus drivers, paraprofessionals, teachers, principals, support staff.
Yes. Um, you know, um, I couldn't help but think, um, Saturday when there was that shooting in California at the grocery store, and then yesterday there was a shooting at a church, and then I remember, uh, downstate, um-
Parkland.
Parkland.
Parkland, Florida. Marjorie Stoneman Douglas.
And so, you know, the one thing that everybody is concerned about with children, tell us what Nassau County's doing, um, to address safety.
So we're talking about school safety?
School safety, absolutely. For the students, and the staff, and the teachers.
Well, I'm going to speak just for a second about Marjorie Stoneman Douglas and Parkland shooting. That was February 14th, 2018. I remember that day well, and I remember being in my office, watching what looked to be like B footage. It was not even a news helicopter was reporting on an incident at a school as the doors burst open and just literally hundreds of students fleeing from what we learned later that, that afternoon, that it was a mass shooting that took place in that school. And I remember thinking how helpless, you know, that situation must have been, and I'm always thinking about our schools and what we do for safety. So think about 1989, when I graduated from the Fernandina Beach High School. We didn't have a school resource officer there. We didn't have a guardian on campus. We didn't have any of that type of stuff. The principals reigned supreme. We all stayed from what seemed like in line and in order. But today, when I got on the school board, our high schools and our middle schools had resource officers. All of our middle schools and high schools had resource officers, and the elementary and the intermediate schools shared those resource officers if there was an issue. I brought that up more than just a few times. That was something very near and dear to me, being a fireman for what is now 27 years. We're required to go to active shooter training. We're required to be a part of what the sheriff's department does and what that would look like for EMS and, and our service that we provide back. The day that Marjorie Stoneman Douglas took place, we were already working towards putting on new resource officers and what would ultimately become guardians for our school. It seemed like the matter of hours after that event on February 14th, 2018, our superintendent called an emergency executive session. We learned that a lot of safeties had to be put into our schools. I was very proud. Our schools had done, a lot of these things were already in place. We just needed to tweak them some. But what took place after that event and what ultimately took place here in Nassau County is we developed our own police department, our own police force.
Really?
A lot of people don't know that. The Nassau County-
I didn't know that.
-School District Police Force is what we have. Our police chief is a dear friend of mine, a local here to Nassau County, Al Smith.
Yeah.
He was a, um, a city police officer for almost 30 years. And, uh, Al left the police force early, and he came over and took over as police chief. We now have resource officers or guardians at every one of our schools, our intermediate schools, our elementary schools, our high schools, our, our, our middle schools. We have mechanisms on all of our doors now. They're, they're pushed to open, they lock whenever they close, glass that you can only see out and not in. Lot and lots and lots have gone into safety. We have, um, the old schools, you remember, you'd open up the front door, there would be a desk, there would be a nice person to receive you, but pretty much you had access to all of our schools. Well, those are now, we have a checkpoint whenever you come in. We have a system called Raptor now. If you are a guest on campus, you have to put your driver's license in, you have to have a badge on, and that's just the way it is. That's for school board members, that's for parents, that's for someone working on the HVAC that's not a school district employee. Short story, I was picking up Brayden, um, I don't know, two weeks ago. I go to Fernandina Beach Middle School, and I was early. I parked, I went inside, I gave them my driver's license, they put a badge on me. I didn't need an escort. I graduated from that school. That was my high school, which is now the middle school. But I was just looking at some of the improvements that, you know, were coming up on the budget for, or our agenda to put into the budget for repair. Also wanted to look at some of the repairs that Mr. Bunch and his guys had completed. As I'm walking on that campus, I got stopped three times in less than 14 minutes. A custodian worker stopped me, and she meant business. She wanted to know, even though I had a badge, she said, you're wandering around, you look lost. Let me get you to the right direction. I said, no, this is my title, my role. I do have a badge. I want to look at different things. The next, I was stopped by someone from the athletic department. Finally, the principal herself, Dr. Crawford, came out, and she says, please tell me that I can help you. I've watched you wandering around here, and I need to know what your business is. So as a grandparent that has a, a grandchild at that school, as a school board member, and, and really as a, you know, an active member in this community, we've got a lot of safety mechanisms on our campus that we're doing internally as well as externally.
Yeah, and I remember when Brayden was over at, um, Imola.
Yes, off of Susan Drive, right.
And, uh, we, uh, mom and I went to have lunch with him, and it took, you know, we had to do everything. We had to sign in, we had to let them know why we're there, we, you know, we had to get the badge and everything before we could go and have lunch with him that day, you know. So, you know, I think any parent, any grandparent, um, from what you've told me, and, and, you know, I, I think they can feel safe that, you know, everything's being done that possibly can be done, uh, above and beyond maybe what's required.
Well, and I want to say again, I think we're doing a lot more than that. Are we perfect with our safety? Absolutely not, but we are very much staying in tune with all the mandates that come down from Department of Education, all the mandates that we should be following. Those are all in place, but we're also tweaking it. We're also working with our staff, working with custodian workers, working with cafeteria workers, and, and getting everybody on the same page that, hey, if somebody's wandering around and doesn't have that badge on, then you stop them immediately. If you see a car parked somewhere that's not supposed to be here, those days are long since gone, that you park in the fire lane and dart into the office and do your business, and then you run back out. So I'm well proud.
Doesn't happen like that anymore.
No, and very proud of our security force here at the Nassau County School District.
So Jamie, what was your initial inspiration to run for the Nassau County School Board?
Uh, so in 2012, want to make sure I'm getting my dates right here. So in 2012, I was invited by a group of teachers to come basically as support. There were a small group of us, uh, that were all going to come and help support our teachers. They were in the middle of, um, negotiations, and they just wanted a force at a school board meeting. Lived here my entire life and graduated from this system. I had no idea where the school board met. That was number one. Number two, I had no political aspirations at all. Number three, I had no idea what I was getting into, meaning, I mean, do we come here and camp out? Is this an all-night deal? What are we doing? Do I have to speak? That type of stuff. That very first meeting, and it's like this, and you would know best, I sit down and I'm there, by the way, the other group didn't all show up, so instead of there being eight of us, I think there was three, but I was one of the three that showed up.
That's usually the way it is.
I heard their budget. Their budget was something along the order of $180 million at the time, and that just got my attention. I had no idea that the Nassau County School District, where I graduated school, had a budget of $180 million. I didn't know that they were the largest employer in the county. I, these were just things I didn't know. And then I hear that there's this new development that's coming out near I-95. We don't have a name for it yet. We were calling it the ENCPA, and they have asked us to build a school because they are going to build houses from State Road 200 and I-95 all the way to the St. Mary's River. I left out of there with more questions and excitement than when I went in. So one meeting turned into two, two turned into five. Next thing I know, I'm going to school board meetings on a pretty regular basis, and, and I knew a lot of the people. Once I got in there, you know, you, you found that this facilities person that's there all the time, well, he was someone that I graduated school with, and Dr. Burns was a school board member at the time. Ms. Cook was a school board member, um, at the time. Ms. Martin, um, I've known the Ruiz family forever, so, you know, you keep going, and somewhere around month six or seven, you start to be asked, and I know this is very common for you, it wasn't for me, but, hey, we'd really like to talk to you about running for school board. Well, I didn't know what the terms were. I, I understood the districts because they were the same as our county commissioners, but I guess kind of got captivated, I guess, and it's been a journey. It's been a challenge, but it's also been very rewarding for me. The men and women that teach here, I, I don't even know how you would pay them the correct accolades for what they do. They work nights, they work weekends, they're just heavily invested, not, not just with our students, they're heavily invested in the community, and it's just a great, great group that work and fight hard every day for the success of our students.
And the success of our county.
Yes.
And, uh, not saying that all the students will remain here in Nassau County after graduation, but a lot of them will.
Yes.
And, you know, they're our future judges, they're our future attorneys, they're our future bricklayers, they're our future commercial fishermen, what have you.
Yes.
And, you know, it's got to be rewarding to a teacher also to know that they are actually pouring concrete, the foundation for the future, because they are.
Well said.
Yeah. And, um, you know, I, I take my hat off. Mary Tom Drew, uh, you remember her? She was a dear, dear, dear friend, and, uh, I think she taught 90% of, of everybody in this county, you know.
John Drew and I had that conversation more than once, yes.
Wonderful lady.
Still see her standing in front of her classroom today.
Uh-huh. Oh, yeah. And, uh, and you, you toed the line with her. I mean, that was just the way, the way it was. Getting back to, I want to come back to the finances just a minute, because at the end of the day, I mean, I don't care if it's the school board, county commission, I don't care, city commission, it all boils down to the finances, to the money. And how does it work with the state of Florida? What do we get? What does Nassau County get from the state of Florida, if anything?
Oh, we get a lot.
Okay. Explain that.
And I don't know those percentages, unfortunately, but we derive local funds through ad valorem taxes.
Right.
And we derive a lot of funds from the state of Florida. So we're somewhat, I hate to use the word shackled, but we are, you know. If, if they're going to give you their check, they want you to play by their rules. Um, so it's, it's a combination of funds that come in, and for me, being a, um, being a spreadsheet person, being a financial person, I often, I've struggled in the beginning, you know, how does it work? Because these funds are a lot of times paid in arrears, so you, you spend it on Monday, and you hope and pray and keep your fingers crossed that it comes in on Friday. So it's a balancing act for us, um, but it's necessary, you know. Could you do it without Department of Education? I mean, sure, you just got to bring in a lot more local revenue to make that work. You know, and in saying that, I, I get a lot of people asking, if you know that the schools are getting close to capacity or at capacity, or you have a school that's not only at capacity, but now we've added portables to increase student stations, why don't you just go ahead and build a school? Well, take, uh, take an elementary school, for instance. Elementary school requires 30 acres of property. Maybe you get away with 25, but I'm going on what DOE would require. So let's just call it 30 acres of property, all the infrastructure that goes in, all the DOT requirements, because you're not just dealing with a building, you're dealing with a building that, you know, houses-
A massive building.
Yeah, thousands of people, you know, including students, obviously, will be occupying this building. You're building this structure to not only the state of Florida standards, but the Department of Education standards, which are grossly more strenuous than normal building standards. And then when you get all done, you're hand a set of keys, and you've spent 50-plus million dollars, and it's expensive to do what we do. But if you don't have the Department of Education, you couldn't fund that, but the Department of Education actually has to sign off on, one, the need, you know, do you have a need? They do what's called a spot survey. They come out, get your request, they come out, they look at the area, they look at your census, they look at student stations, they look at future growth. There's a lot that goes into this. Out of 67 counties, I can assure you, we're not the only one asking for the state of Florida to come out and look at new schools to be built. Then the challenge of finding property. I mean, you know, there's been plenty of times you and I have looked, and here's a 25, 30, 50 acre tract that has been dormant since, you know, I was a kid.
Forever.
And now it's got, you know, a single-family home on every corner, and property is becoming a premium, um, and becoming a challenge all by itself. But we put together a land growth development committee that has done unbelievable work. Uh, our school district owns property in and throughout the county now. This group came together, and they looked at that property, and they gave us updates on that property, what are we using it for currently? Some we lease to, um, archery, people that go out and practice with bow and arrows, other we've, we've leased for hunting, uh, some we lease to other entities, so we generate some, uh, revenue off of it. But the land growth, um, committee came together and identified all those pieces for us, put it in a nice booklet, something that, you know, we can all open up and take a look at. Then they're constantly doing, we're meeting with them on an ongoing basis, looking at other opportunities in and throughout the county. What's available? What's near our schools now? What's in an area that we think we're going to need to build a school, which is obviously in the Uly area? What's available, what's not? Uh, also, we started, uh, um, a concurrency mitigation agreement with developers. That started in 2018. A lot of controversy over that, but the way it worked, if a developer comes in to Nassau County and builds more than one, more than one single-family home, meaning two or more, they have to pay their fair share back to the school district. We've generated a lot of funds off of that. Like 12-plus million dollars, and they're all used for capital, so they can't be used for reoccurring, they can't be used for salaries, they can't be used for bonuses, it's capital. And we have pushed all of those funds for exactly that, adding on to schools, building new schools, buying properties, uh, for future sites for schools.
You said something, uh, a few minutes ago, and I, I want to ask you, and this is another one of those cold ones that I didn't tell you about. You said that, okay, if the state of Florida's going to hand you a check, then you need to play by their rules with the Department of Education and the state of Florida. Are you, are you satisfied with the DOE and the, the things that they have in place? Or do you, is there anything, if you had the magic wand, is there something you'd like to change with the DOE? Or are there standards, something that you agree with?
It's kind of a loaded question.
Well, you know.
I don't disagree with all of them. I think, um, if there's any part that I would change and change immediately would be their requirements for testing.
Oh, okay.
You know, testing's a big one for us, so, you know, again, you play by their rules, these are things that, this is what their rules are.
Yeah.
From a financial standpoint, I, I don't know that I would disagree with them completely. I mean, they're asking us to have enough property to build a structure on-
Which is common sense.
You know what? At the end of the day, it really is. Is it expensive? It is bloody expensive. But is it necessary and needed, without a doubt?
All right, that's fair enough. Uh, I, I can see that totally. When is the election? And-
My election.
Your election. When is your election?
August 23rd of this year, 2022.
So you don't go to November?
No, I'll be in the primary.
Okay, so whoever wins the primary is the school board member?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So August, what?
23rd.
23rd, okay. I've got to remember to vote that day.
I would, yes. And if you don't, I'll remind you again, and make sure you get to where you need to be so you can vote.
I will, I promise you, I, I will do that. Well, is there anything in closing, Jamie, that you'd like to, to say?
Um, well, you know, yeah, there's, there's actually lots of things. I think we have a fabulous school system, and I don't mean a fabulous school system because we've got wonderful teachers. I think we have a fabulous school system because of everybody that's involved. Every stakeholder in the Nassau County School District makes a difference. The custodian makes a difference. School bus drivers make a difference. Cafeteria workers make a difference. These are the people that put the key in the front door before anybody else shows up in the morning. We have to have them, and they do a fabulous job, not just for us, but for every student in Nassau County. Our teachers are fabulous. I had Aunt Mom show me their child's phone. She did a screenshot for me, and the caller ID said Mom number two, and it was this child's teacher.
Mom number two.
Mom number two. So, you know, you think about that, that's what kind of connection we have here in Nassau County. I would say if you like the fact that you've got a born and raised local on the school board- board, I would ask for you to consider voting for me on August twenty-third. I would ask you that if you're comfortable with an A-rated school district and safe schools here in our county, I would ask for your vote and your support. I would ask that if, if, if it's important to you, as it is to me, to have a businessperson on the board, I would ask for your vote and support on August the twenty-third.
Do you have, currently have a website?
I do. Votejamiedionis.com. Um, there's all kinda contact information in there. Um, I've had the same cell phone since nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six. I know you and I are one-off in numbers.
One, one number off. So you're accessible if someone wants to call you and have a question or, or wants to have a conversation about a cer- a certain topic, you're, you're available.
I, I do that on a routine basis.
Daily basis, I know. I lived that for sixteen years. Uh, well, I tell you, this has been, uh, very informative, especially to me, because I learned a lot of things today, and I'm serious, that I didn't know. And, uh, I, I just, um, I, I'm proud of our school system. I know you're a product of Nassau County school system. Janet, my daughter-in-law is, uh, I am, uh, you know, we all are. Your sister, Christie, uh,
Um, I started going through the list, you know? So it was you and Mom, I mean, countless cousins and uncles and aunts. And then I got down to my kids and grandchildren, and then I started looking at our own neighborhood, you know? Both directions. I mean, we have graduates of the Nassau County
Well, even going back to your great-great-grand, or your great-grandmother and, uh, great-great-uncles, uh, going to school here. So, you know, we've been, the whole family is a product of the Nassau County school system and, uh, I'm proud of that, you know?
As am I, as am I, yeah.
Well, thank you so much for this today. Uh, I really appreciate it. And, um, I just, you know, like I said, I've learned a lot today.
Well, I wanna thank you, this has been a lot of fun today and really glad you chose the Amelia Schoolhouse Inn for us to come and, and do our talk today. This was, I wanna thank them for allowing us to come in, number one, but this has been great being here in this, uh, in this building. And wanna thank everybody for watching today and also don't forget, August twenty-third, that's primary voting this year.
So who you wanna vote for?
I would love to have everyone vote for Jamie Dionis on August the twenty-third.
All right. Well, Jamie, it's, uh, like I said, I've learned a lot, uh, I truly have. And, uh, I just wanna thank you for, uh, you know, being with us today and, uh, I hope everybody got some information out of this.
As do I.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm Jamie Dionis, your candidate for reelection to the Nassau County School Board, District One. To learn more about me, please visit votejamiedionis.com. Again, that's votejamiedionis.com.